Hi Rick.
My name is here.
Hey, yeah.
He's gonna be here. Okay, we're meeting. And he was getting computers.
A vote call to order. The we have an open morning school district school board. Um, Tuesday, February the eighteenth at seven, ten P M. And I would like to ask everyone to stand for above the silence and.
Let this be the sign of the United States of America into a republic where its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mrs. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Francis.
Yeah.
Mr. Hawke.
Here.
Mr. Hoover.
Rick.
Mrs. Irwin Adams.
Here.
Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Mr. Cruz.
Here.
Dr. La Boy.
Here.
Okay, I would like to announce executive sessions that we've had since our last committee meeting, the first one's on January thirteenth at six P M. The second one was February third at six P M. And we had one this evening, February the eighteenth at six P M for processes of personnel. Now we will have hearing from citizens. Anyone who would like to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address and we'll give comments to five minutes so that we can do the best we can to do.
Good evening, Jennifer Nysley, and I'm here representing the Altona Area Public Library. Uh, I want to thank the district for allowing the library to participate in the book for the group again, uh, this year, it was a lot of fun. Thanks for including us. This is very much. Um, pleased to announce that we've been able to boost the mock trial, uh, teams with our practitioners now and then, and that's why we're trying to do that. The program is entitled, What a Disaster, uh, that our children's group staff have been having, uh, it's been very successful. We have at least twelve children in attendance each time, and those are junior high students. Um, so that's an age group that we really want to engage more, so we're very pleased with that attendance. Speaking of attendance, um, in the month of January, we have four hundred and fifty-two students sign in after school, uh, for that time between three and five o'clock. That brings the total to date, uh, two thousand two hundred and seventy-six students signing in after school for the, the after school time. Um, bingo is March fifteenth, anybody need more information on that, I can give that to you. And I want to thank, uh, the members who've, who've come and spent some time with me at the library recently for a tour, or just to learn a little bit more about our library, the services that we provide. And I would again extend that invitation to all of you. If you would like to learn some more, please give me a call, and I'd be happy to schedule that for you.
Chen, Chen.
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about the bingo you just tossed across there.
Oh, um, so basket bingo, the library does one major fundraiser a year to offset the cost of operations. It's the Shamrock Basket Bingo, March fifteenth. Um, we typically raise upwards of twenty thousand dollars, um, so it is a, a significant fundraiser. It's a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun, too. And all the proceeds for that goes toward our outreach programs, uh, which serve the underserved and elderly in the community, as well as the Head Start programs and some local daycare centers for the kids who can't come to the library. We have staff person that goes to them and provides library services onsite for them. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Tina Swine, I'm the special project coordinator and the adult ed program director for the Altona School District. Tonight, uh, I come to you with a respectful and honorable request that you suspend your voting, you table your voting to, uh, to another time in order to do some problem solving so that we can, um, find ways to continue the adult education program. During the fact, past four years, I've worked as the Altona School District Program Director, Adult Education Program Director, excuse me. In that time, I've learned a lot about the adult education program and the significant impact that it has on our Southern Alleghenies workforce development region, as well as, and most importantly, on the parents and families of the Altona School District, pre-K up through twelfth grade families. Our main location is at the Stevens Building, but we're not a location, we're a program. We're a program that serves the needs of our community. We're a hidden gem, where adults in our community can easily find us, but adult ed's more than just a location. Our learners enroll in adult ed with specific goals, to enter employment, attain better employment, enroll in trade school or college. They come to us because they're motivated to improve their circumstances, some want to prove their, to their children that education is important and possible. Did you know that Altona has been the only P D E approved adult ed provider in Blair County since nineteen sixty-nine? In twenty eighteen, we were again awarded the adult ed grant. We are now in year two of a four-year contract with the Department of Education. We provide services to adults in Blair, Huntington, and Fulton Counties. In eighteen, twenty eighteen, nineteen, three hundred and sixty-eight adults came to us for our services. One hundred and seventy of those were residents in the Altona Area School District. They range in age from seventeen to seventy-one. Their parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, brothers, family members of our students. Fifty percent of them were preparing for their high school equivalency credential. The other fifty percent are dislocated workers. They're your neighbors, the parents of our students, your colleagues. They came to us, the dislocated workers especially, come to us due to the closure of General Cable, North American Communication, Harbison Locker, and Watco Mechanical Services. And there's a possibility of Norfolk Southern employees needing our services as well. Many of these dislocated workers qualify for trade funding, which will pay for them to go to career training and post-secondary school, but they need us first to brush up on their math and reading skills. We are outcomes based, we have performance outcomes that we are required and expected to meet that are workforce development focused. We have exceeded the performance targets for eighteen, nineteen that the Department of Education has put in place for us. No one does adult ed better than the Altona School District. And our outcome data is proof. The data is public, if you want to look at it on the P A Adult Ed Resources website and see how other programs are meeting or not meeting their outcomes, it's there for the taking. Our learners have a positive impact on the A A S D tax base. When they exit our program, they are positioned to earn family sustaining wages to buy or keep their homes. We help them set realistic goals and get on a career path out of part-time jobs. They leave our program ready for careers. Many of our adults enroll in the G A C T C adult programs and post-secondary programs. Did you know thirty-one of our learners last year earned their high school equivalency? Adults with a high school equivalency earn ten thousand more than those who don't have their equivalency. Fifty-four of our learners enrolled in career training in college last year. Recent statistics indicate that seventy percent of the jobs that will be available in the next ten years require more than a high school education. We are helping the citizens in our community get to where they need to be so that they can earn family sustaining wages and contribute to the tax base. We're more than a high school equivalency, we prepare our learners for new careers, we prepare them through healthcare prep classes, L P N prep, so that they can pursue careers in the Southern Alleghenies high priority occupations. When our adults enroll in G A C T C, it helps pay A S D by driving down costs associated with the high school student programs. Please, I ask you to table the vote in order to explore new solutions so that we can maintain the adult ed program in the Altona School District.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tina Martin Spillone, and I'm the youth manager and educational sports specialist, they call me, and instructor of the adult education program. I'm also a graduate of the Altona High School in nineteen seventy-three and a supporter of the A A S D Foundation and Downwind Program. I've worked in the field of family literacy and adult ed since two thousand and one. It became my intention and staffed me on Thursday, February thirteenth with the Director of Federal Programs visit to our program that the Altona Area School Board was to receive recognition and plan to vote to discontinue the Altona Area School District relationship with the Pennsylvania Department of Education, adult education program. This plan was to take effect if voted on six thirty twenty twenty, meaning that the Altona Area School District no longer desired to have the adult education program as part of the services it offered to the educational community in this district and in the county. Tina has given you some statistics that I had in my speech as well, so I'm skipping that. I'm here to speak on behalf of the learners. Let me start with a brief story in memory of my father. My father encouraged learning and seeking out of educational opportunities. Why did I mention this? Due to my father's family financial hardship, he was forced to quit school in the nineteen thirties. Being the eldest, he took on the responsibility of his parents and his five siblings, one of which was severely mentally challenged. His father was permanently disabled. He accept, he accepted that role and provided for his family. Within two years, he began to stabilize the family and was fortunate enough to have the opportunity to return to the Altona Area School District, Altona High School at that time, and graduate, all the while continuing to support his family. Yes, he graduated. Now, let's fast forward to the present time. In our community, we have many learners that have not made, have had to make the decision, whatever the reason, to leave school. Many, and I say most, are not as fortunate as my father to be able to return to high school to complete that schooling and to graduate. They had the, they had to look for the alternate programs such as a high school equivalency or G E D to finish their education. Others who have struggled in school or have been out of school for some time found themselves needing to remediate their studies because of numerous recent layoffs, plant closing, and their desire, or their desire to return to school for post-secondary education studies, some to improve their skills for employment opportunities in order to reach their educational dreams and improve their employment. Let me tell you about some of our learners in the adult education program. As the board, as a board that oversees this program, yes, they are your learners. A sixteen-year-old falls in love and quits school, gets married and has her children. She knows she wants to finish school, so she comes to the program with her sister, and they both study and receive their G E D. At a later time, she decides to go to college. She returns to the adult education program to improve her math skills for the entrance exam. She gains college admission, works hard at her studies, and graduates with honors. She works in her field and enjoys every minute of it. A thirty-year-old lacks self-confidence but has all the skills to pass the G E D. She is encouraged and follows through with her studies and the G E D testing. She passes. She has four children and a fiance. She does this to show her children she can succeed and be an example to them, to never give up your dreams. They support her through it all. She then attends G A C T C in the welding field just last year, and she and her classmates, classmates achieve remarkable honors. She graduates with a welding certificate, all this within a year of receiving her G E D. I spoke to this woman today. She is working in Bedford, she is happy, and without this program, this would have never been able for her to say, I have done it. She also has four children, and all four children, children attend Altona Area School District. Along with her, in the same welding class, another one of our students who got a G E D also received those honors, and she is also working in the field of welding. Two learners achieved their certifications after remediating to improve their math and reading skills at the adult ed program. They studied, they practiced hard for their certifications, and they have opened in the last year and a half their own businesses in the city of Altona. Numerous L P Ns prep through the medical preparation radiation classes at the Altona Education Program over the past eight years. They followed their dreams of service in the healthcare field and completed their studies at G A C T C. They now work in many healthcare facilities in and across this county. A learner subject to a layoff from a great job found himself needing to remediate to be able to qualify for schooling. He was not sure if he could do it. He questioned himself many times. He was aiming to meet the educational requirements and the Trade Act requirements for post-secondary schooling. He finished that schooling and now works for the city of Altona. He also lives in the Altona area. Another learner who had a G E D found herself out of a job, secondary to layoff and plant closing, again, plant closing. Layoffs are devastating. She cried to us and was so distressed. She received encouragement from the program, she studied hard, worked hard to meet all the requirements necessary for that post-secondary ed and her Trade Act, and she graduated with honors in accounting. An E S L learner comes to this county unable to speak English, she attended the adult education program. Fast forward, let me tell you her, her accomplishments. She passed her G E D, graduates from Penn State University, and goes on to graduate with a master's from adult education. This student also was recognized by the state at the state level. Another E S L learner progresses through the adult education program, she works hard to achieve her educational goals with our program, receives, receives the services at O B R and applies to G A C T C. She graduates within a year from G A C T C with honors, and she is their student of year. An employed student realized that he could not go any further, he promoted or obtained several certifications in his field until he had his G E D. When he left high school, it was not his desire to leave, but his parents. He called the adult ed program, he took classes, and passed all four parts of the G E D in one weekend. Learners pass the high school equivalency program G E D now are aiming to say one thing, yes, on their employment application. Do you have a high school diploma or a G E D? They can answer yes. For two re, for two recent learners, they are credentialed G E D learners. This is a real possibility. This means they can become employed and no longer depend on the services of the county office and assistants for the welfare programs. A recent learner, learner struggled with the G E D math, and boy, did she ever struggle. Most of us would. The other three parts came real easy to her. However, let me tell you, she persevered. She could not get employment until she had her G E D, but now she received her G E D and is gainfully employed. Another G E D grad went on to post-secondary education at Penn Highlands. Her family was so pleased with her accomplishment, they all cried together the day she was honored at her G E D graduation. This list can continue on, but you all get the point by now. Our learners and those credentialed with their G E Ds are successful. They enter and graduate from post-secondary studies, they enter the workforce, and they become tax payers in our community. They are our friends, our neighbors, they may even be a part of your family. They may be a person who you do not know, even know, but they have succeeded in reaching their goal because of the adult education program offered here in our district. I understand that possibly forty learners in the Altona High School quit the year of two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Why? Only they, they and their parents know, but all are in need of a high school equivalency diploma now. And, um, Tina referred to this, a graduate means, graduate with a G E D means ten thousand more dollars, but the other statistic she did mention is by twenty twenty, and we are here now, sixty-five percent of all employment opportunities are going to require post-secondary education or trade school beyond high school, so these folks will need their G E D to be able to enter that, that's sixty-five percent. I would ask if you would research, research your decision thoroughly and look for cost-saving ways to continue to offer this program in our county. I've heard that our building may be costly to operate. A solution of sorts is this. For example, run it with satellite sites, just as the Juniada United Methodist Church does. This church opens its doors to provide a classroom two times a week for an adult ed class year-round and has done so since two thousand fifteen in May. No fee is charged. They do this as an outreach ministry of the church. I believe that others would, and they do the same if approached in other areas of this county, as this is commonplace in other areas of state. As they often say, do not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Please make an informed decision because once this is gone from your leadership, it probably will never come back to this district again. I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to give you the update on our learners, and I appreciate that you would consider to take this vote and make a reasonable decision based on research that you would have. Thank you so very much.
My name is Kelly Williams, uh, twenty seventh of two thousand, I graduated. I'm, I'm speaking about the adult ed program. In, I'm there for two thousand, I graduated, I was in eleventh grade. And I had, when I was growing up, it wasn't the best, uh, environment. And I was in placement foster care, and when I got out, I had changed, but people in the school, the teachers and such, sometimes look at you like you don't change, they don't give you the benefit of the doubt. And I know a lot of people, like kids and stuff, so they face that, they go through the system, the people, the teachers and such have that opinion before they left. And a lot do give them a chance, I'm not saying they don't. Anyway, I ended up quitting school. In December of two thousand one, I went to the adult ed ed program to see if I'd get my G E D because I had my first child in September of two thousand one. And I wanted to do things to make my life better, to make my kids' life better. Sorry. And I had a huge problem reading and math. And the people at that program really cared. And they don't care about anything before you walk through that door. All they care about is seeing you become a better person. And I don't have to say I passed the G E D the first go, but I didn't. It took me, September of two thousand one, until almost two thousand and five, finally get my G E D. Every time I would give up on myself, the teachers there would reach out and be like, you can do this, just come back, give it one more chance. And their determination and the fact that they felt that I could do this kept bringing me back. And I finally got it. The math is not easy at all. And anyway, I have three kids who go to school here. And they have friends, and I see what they go through. Anyone who knows me knows I support education and know, I know the value of going through school and graduating, and any person that comes to me and says that they want to quit school or they already quit school, I've talked so many kids into coming back to school here after, after quitting because they thought G E D was the easier option. You know? But for those kids and those adults, they have anxiety, like I was just showing, for some reason, just went away. Um, there's some people that just can't handle being here because of their own issues. And this program accepts you with open arms and helps you to thrive and survive and do better with your life. And I've been able, I, I even went back after I got my G E D, I went to college and I had to get math, I needed math. I had to go back to get refreshable in math and stuff. And again, they helped me and I aced the test, you know? And here I am, years later, and I founded a nonprofit over, at the Gables Building, and I want to offer, you know, this woman touched on it, we have the space, I would offer up to the adult ed program as much as they need to use during the day if they want to have an office there or anything, and do it completely free of charge. And I have a feeling you can staple this boot and you reach out to the community, there's a lot of other nonprofits that would open up space to have this because it's such a valuable resource. And whenever you go back and you think about it, like, a lot of people that go through this program, it's because they're down on their luck, there's trauma, and there's different things associated to why they quit school. And if we end this program, I know it's not ending the program because it could be outsourced, but we're not going to have the amazing educators that they have now there that actually care about this program. It isn't just another grant, it isn't just another, it's not, it's about seeing people succeed. But if you can stay with it and you reach out to other nonprofits, heck, I'll even reach out to a bunch of places that I know and see if they'll open up space for this program to stay supervised by Altona School District.
I'm Doug Brennan, two hundred and eighty Lincoln Avenue, don't worry about my five minutes. I have two topics. First one's really quick, it's the adult ed. I'm not going to talk about the quality of the program because whenever you're getting state recognition, that sort of speaks for itself. And in addition to that, all board members should have gone into that building and talked with the staff, talked with the students, and where to get them before making this decision. What I am going to do is remind the board that in twenty seventeen, the board was presented with the option of dropping the Wayne P. Kimmel program. And it was the same type of story, and it's like, we're going to save by dropping it. Well, the board requested more information, um, received presentations, received breakdowns of the costs, and after that was all done, your little magician over there, Dr. P, um, figured out a way to not only make the program sustain itself, but for it to earn profit. And that's the thing about a deficit in the business world, sure, you can cut, but it's a stopgap. At the end of the day, costs are always, always going to go up, and you have to figure out how to bring in more cash, which is something a body should be doing. So, I certainly encourage the board to actually consider this. Make sure you have all the numbers to make an informed decision and to make a decision. Second topic, excuse me, which is actually related, is with regard to committees. You'll notice in the agenda that committees were moved to, a committee report, rather, were moved to the end of the agenda and the list of committees was gone. So if you want to know what committees that the, the board actually has, you have to go to the website and try to dig for the paperwork on that. So why were committees at the front of the meeting? Well, whenever something goes from a committee to a body, there's all kinds of circumstances, there's all kinds of other topics, and it builds a foundation of understanding. If you put those at the end of the meeting, then you've already made your decision before you have all of that information. So, that's a mistake. Um, second, you have this little gal right here. Currently, her report is at the very end of the meeting. So she has a test tomorrow or whatever, she can't discreetly make her exit, and plus, at the end of the meeting, sometimes people are already cutting out, or maybe they're dousing off. And she has important things to say, too, because her voice is coming from the student body, it's what's going on with the students. So, um, a comment was made at the last meeting, if you want to know what happened at committee meetings, read the minutes. So I did that with regard to adult ed. I went to the finance committee meeting minutes and I found carbon copy of the agenda, couple numbers attached to it. Nothing said anything about adult ed, any sort of discussion in. So I thought, okay, I'm going to go to the extra sheet that comes with it. The extra sheet was a list of budgets, and adult ed was number thirty-two, and it said adult ed, a hundred grand. Again, nothing about the discussions from that committee. So, the body isn't getting information, or enough information, rather, from those committees to make an informed decision. By, by shoving these at the end, it's actually forcing the board to make a less informed decision. All right, so, to move on to committee assignments, we have a board of nine. Each person should have an equal vote, that's the way a board of nine works. According to the committee, and there's actually representation assignments for other bodies, four be forced. Four people are assigned to two items, two people are assigned to three items, one person's assigned to four items, and one person is assigned to nine. So, I say this to the board, do you really believe that your vote or your voice on those committees that comes up through the actual board is only worth 2.5 votes compared to nine? And if the answer is, "I should be equal just like everybody else," you have to do something about it. You've got to actually speak up. And actually, Mr. Hoover, who's on the phone right now, you can't see him, but he's in a motorized wheelchair. He was removed from the facilities committee. So the only person who lives and breathes ADA compliance on the board was removed from facilities. And he has a significant voice with that. So again, make sure you're making informed decisions. Make sure that you have all the information that you need to actually cast a vote. And make your voice heard, just because you're a newbie on the board, don't be shy about sitting there. Because right out of the gate, you're, you're born in fire. You've got to make decisions, you've got to cast your vote. So please, do it in an informed way and take our word from the unit. Thanks.
Good evening, Jamie Kreitzer, 5205 Grandview Avenue. I come before the board again for the athletic staffing, specifically with regards to the Altima swim team. This is now my second time before the board, my last time, for those of you who were here, was March 4th. I made a simple request that the staffing for that specific sport be increased. I wanted more accountability. There was one head coach and an assistant who was her son. Every other team has a boys' and a girls' coach. For track teams, they have paid timers. We have eight-year-olds, seven-year-olds timing our lanes, we have one coach and an assistant coach. The things that they're doing, I spoke about last year because my dad always said, "You can catch more bees with honey." So I came and I tried to be as polite and courteous as I could, asking for that request, which went unheard. The things that were occurring, the weight room, the extra practices, great, they're great for the kid. The things that are not occurring, the accountability. No one is watching in that locker room, those kids are that unattended. And I can legitimately show you where the coaching staff are leaving before the single child has exited that dressing room. On those buses, the behaviors that again are being recorded, there is no one correcting any of them, not once. I have spoken to, I believe, every principal in the school district at this point, both verbally and in writing. I have followed up, for over two years, I have been making the same requests. I'm going to tell you real quick, it's worried about my son, who for whatever reason is not the coach's favorite. Just put it eloquently. He has ADHD, he's a busy boy. I embrace him, I'm not blinded to knowing what that difficulty is in bringing up a boy. It was very early on, he was a freshman, now this is last year. He went to an invitational, they're huge, there's swimmers everywhere, teams everywhere, coaches everywhere. He missed his first event. She got so mad at him, she pulled him from all the other events, she took his $10 food allotment. That day, my child ate the crust of other children's pizza. Shortly after that, she was caught, again, recorded bantering with other swimmers on the pole deck about other swimmers. My daughter was privy to this conversation, which was about her own brother. She said, "Nanette, I don't think this is fair, what you're doing to him." The answer was, "Your smart mouth, mind your own business." That year, not only was my daughter a junior, my son a freshman, both qualifying district swimmers. P.I.W.A. rule states if you are the top one or top two swimmer and you qualify, it is your right to compete. They were academically eligible. They were both pulled from the roster, neither of those two were allowed to go to districts at that moment. I went, my husband and I reached out to Phil Brachio, the athletic director. At this point, he had now asked that Nanette, for taking the lunch money, apologize. With a child, that's not a child, is that not the epitome of old-school bullying? According to today's standard, is that not being reported to the direct, the education, Board of Education? But apparently, if it's a paid employee official, saying you're sorry is acceptable. As a mother, it wasn't acceptable to me and it still isn't. So, Phil corrected it. He allowed them to go to the meet and swim events that they rightfully qualified for. On that pole deck, at that event, my parents, my husband and I sat and she pulled my freshman from his qualifying event. It was in print, he was there, he was present, and she did not swim that swimmer. What was the reason? There wasn't one. I was never provided one, nor was that swimmer. So I thought, "Isaac, are you swimmer, you're in the water doing everything that she asks you?" You know, because I don't want to be that blind-minded bear that's just not seeing that there's the two sides. So of course I asked my daughter, "Joel, is he in the water today?" She's like, "He didn't get up once, Mom, he's swimming everything." She's like, "I think I saw him short out on 100." Oh no, he was on point, so now this is his second year as a sophomore. I said nothing, I thought, "Okay, nothing's changed, my request was unheard, we'll let it go and see what happens." Uniform distribution. All uniforms were distributed to every swimmer that was present that day with the exception of my son. She said in front of his peers, "Maybe if you get your grades up, you'll get a suit." He was eligible.
Could you maybe discuss this with Dr. Freital because you're actually touching on personnel and we can't do that in the public?
I would love to, because I don't know where to go. And my biggest fear is next year, because each year is pulled from districts. He's not going to be allowed to compete. He is the second seeded by 3,000ths of a second in a sport. And I know those records, the man who holds that record, he's a D1 swimmer. It's a hundred thousand dollar opportunity that currently my child isn't being allotted because he has ADHD, is my best guess. I'm asking you, please hear me.
Okay, if you would maybe take some time to talk to Dr. Freital or Mr. Hesch, I'm sure you'd be willing to listen to it.
Glad to have another conversation with me, gentlemen, I am available anytime.
You know, Phil, in all honesty, this stuff sets me more than anything. And I know you want to talk to Dr., you know, I want an answer, I enjoy that a board member wants an answer. Both, I want to hear both, I hear this side, and I am embarrassed for the school.
I understand.
I am embarrassed, alright?
Yes.
So I just hope that we get something done. I'll tell you what, before I leave this board, I'll make sure your son's, your son's going to be staked, alright?
Love that, thank you.
And I'll tell you what, this can't happen, I'm telling you, it's, a couple times it happens and it just upsets me. You're going to be taking care of your son, you're going to be taking care of Phil. I know, I want an answer, would you please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam President and I, we'll also be involved in that conversation. Mrs. Kracher, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to be involved in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ken Sozey, 1180 Paul Davenport Avenue, here for the Adult Education Program. I've worked, I've been working here, with companies for 42 years, and they up and closed up. I told my children, as they grow up, is going to get their education in my way. Well, here I am, 62, going back for my GED. Let me go on to something else here with Adult Education Program. I know a woman that after 15 years of marriage, she went back to the school to get her GED. After she got her GED through the Adult Education Program, she went and went to the mountain, right there with honors. And today, she's a nurse at Towne County Hospital, so, any of her offensive, so she has come to well, to get a program. And you know, I've met a lot of people, since I started the program, hundreds of them, that are trying to help themselves. They just need that education, that way to go. You never know, you know, if you're in a nursing home sometime, think of how many of them LPNs or RNs there that went through your program, or the hospital, how many of them went through your program to get with that, to make themselves better citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak over that?
My name's Six Larcher, I live in the world, I, East Carolina Avenue. And I came here tonight, I seen something on the agenda about mansion parks accessible restrooms. Now, I think they need them out there because years ago, Mr. Johnson and I was out there at a track, at District 6's track meet. And one of these people came down to me and said, "Mr. Larcher, we have a man in a wheelchair. He has to go to the restroom." "Where can he go, he can't argue because his wheelchair is here." They had to take that man out of his sheets at 58th Street so he could go to the bathroom. So I think something has to be done. When I was on the board, I pushed for something out there, for a handicap, but many things have to be done out there. He cannot keep kicking the can down the road. This is what the board, this board store, kicking the can down the road. Somebody's going to have to stay for it, it's going to be the kids, I'm not going to be here any longer. So, let's get to work together, work together as a team on it. I've worked a lot of, but today here, a lot of boy, private issues. We work together all the time, so I thought I'd come to that, I seen this on the agenda. Something has to be done at Mansion Park, and I think the state might have to make it close down. Our home by state, things that need to be done. So I, so I was saying, I'm sorry, maybe for my voice, I'm getting old. Thank you.
On Sunday, four of us went out to Mansion, something will be done, I assure you.
You were out there.
I was out there and we were out Sunday on our own time, and it will be done, I assure you.
Kick the can down the road, somebody here will do it.
We didn't kick the can down the road, no. We don't kick the can down the road, something will be done. It's in the box.
Hey, let me tell you something, years ago when we did Mansion Park, you and I are at fault. We should have done something back then, but we should have done something. We weren't assertive enough, but we should have done something. But that's our fault. You know, these guys here have a budget problem. There is a big budget, but please listen, okay? And we're going to try to do the best we can, alright? And something's going to be done about the ADA mansion. And that's something that most of the board members are going to make sure happens. Alright, alright, Dave. And I think, Dave, if you want to look at you, the stands are being busted out. Stands were just done, you should go out and look, take a look at them, they did a wonderful job. Take a look at them, they did a wonderful. Mansion Park right now is probably the nicest it's been since I've been back on the board. So go out and take a look. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to press the board? Okay, if not, then we will move on, we have a special presentation this evening.
Good evening, I'm stepping in for Paula Hornet, she was able to be here tonight. So this evening, we want to recognize the administration, faculty and staff of McCalla Heights Elementary. They were recognized last month as a Title I distinguished school. Each year, federal programs designate Title I distinguished schools and schools for growth. They showed that they were the top 5% in academic achievement over the last two years with their PSSA scores. So we have some of their administration, faculty and staff here tonight, so we'd like to recognize them. Congratulations on your achievement, each has a, we will receive a pin that says you made a difference. You can also see there's a banner that will be hung at the school as well to recognize this big accomplishment. So we congratulate you, I think we would like to say a few words to you after you come up. If not, we can get you in front and have, get a picture with the banner, that would be great.
Could we maybe introduce them?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, Tom and Quiver. I'll start with the building principal and then she can introduce everybody who's with her tonight. We have Mrs. Brandy Agno.
Hello, everyone, thank you. So I have with me tonight, I have Mrs. Jenna Michelle, she's a second grade teacher. I have Mrs. Carrie McCarter, she's a first grade teacher. I have Mrs. Ashley Langer, she's our reading specialist, Title I instructor. And I have Mrs. Amanda Sheridan, she's fourth grade teacher. And Mrs. Kathy Oaks, she's also a second grade teacher. And I would like to personally thank them for all of their hard work. I know that we get recognized for this, but I feel like they do all of the hard work. They're there with the students, they really push them and they do what's best for them every single day.
I would like to thank all of you as well and congratulations for your job well done.
Thank you.
Can I have one more clarification?
Yes.
This was for the top 5%?
Yes.
This, this sort of understands, there's, there's two awards, one is growth, which means your score has improved. But to be in the top 5% means that you are in the 95th or 96th percentile or higher of all the Title I schools in state. That is a huge accomplishment. That's not like, oh, we grew from, from 20 to 50, no, we, there aren't that many better. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
So the boys' basketball is at ten to twelve, and they just played, not in like our district competition, but they just played AGA in the one sixty four sixty three, so it was a tight game. The girls' basketball has recorded a twelve-ten, and both of them are competing. At Mount Aloysius in the District Six, uh, or Championship is Friday, the twenty first. And Altona is actually taking a student bus to Mount Aloysius for the game, so kind of students are interested in that. Um, the swim team has a record of four second for both girls and boys in their districts. It's Friday and Saturday, the twenty eighth and twenty ninth of that season. Uh, the wrestling team, their district is gonna be held at, on February twenty second in the Fieldhouse. And Altona just housed the double A district this past Friday in the Fieldhouse. Um, the gymnastics team has a record of nine zero, and they just competed in districts, and they won the overall district championships. Um, I believe she's in tenth grade, Gracie Weaver, she won the all-around at a district competition. She can choose from Altona. Um, and they were also just on February fifteenth, they were the Central PA Gymnastic Championships at that meet as well. In Georgia, they just had a meet, um, this past weekend in Youngstown, Ohio, where a four-by-two-hundred team of Brooke Long, Mark Azner, Sarah Graham, and Derek Berkhimer both qualified for states and broke a new school record in four by two hundred. And many of the relays, jumpers, and hurdlers qualified for states as well at that meet. And then the Lion Ears, our school's dance team, on March seventh, they're going to be, going to Mardi Lech to compete at the mansion's dance competition as well. Now, we also have a senior cheerleader, Lexi Wyson, who was chosen to represent Altona in the league of cheerleaders across PA and Maryland at the sixteenth annual PSFCA Big Thirty Three Football Classic. First on May twenty fifth. Then, the more news would be, uh, like, home to school, students from eighth and twelfth grades, that's when they, the nine girls up next year, they had to schedule these past few weeks for the new year with, um, a move from a seven to eight class period a day. And there's also an addition of many new electives for students to choose from. Um, the rehearsals for the school musical, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat are also underway. They begin in the beginning of January, where we have not only high school students, but there's students from the junior high, there's forty-two elementary students and a number of teachers also involved in the production. And that will be the first, second, third, and fourth phase. The Student Council's annual cereal drive has begun, it just began on February tenth, and it runs through February twenty seventh, so next week. And I know a number of teachers are holding competitions within their classes to see who can collect the most cereal. And I know they've had, in the past couple of years, thousands, over thousands of boxes raised for the cereal drive, which benefits families and children of Altona. The PMEA district band just had, uh, just occurred this past weekend, and, uh, there was a number of Altona students in PMEA band orchestra who competed, and then a number of them also moving on to regionals, which will be later next month. And then also, the special needs classrooms at the high school, in Mr. Matias's class, they collected over ten thousand birthday bags, where they are being donated to Martin's Grocery on Chestnut Avenue. And in exchange for them collecting the thousands of grocery bags, they're getting a park, a park bench donated to them of recycled materials, which is being placed in the courtyard of the building. Uh, the new weight room at the high school in the A building has been completed, and lifting students have made the switch from the Sheets building to the new lifting room in the high school. And I've heard a lot of good things from the lifting students in the elective, the elective class of lifting about how nice the new weight room is. Then, the annual talent show is going to be also this Friday, or, yeah, this Friday, February twenty first, in the Auditorium at seven. Then, PMEA regional course is next Thursday through Saturday. So I think we have, um, maybe like fifteen core students who are going to the regionals course, which is the second level, um, next Thursday through Saturday, to see if they qualify for states. And then, also, there's going to be a ribbon cutting ceremony for the Rachel's Closet on Wednesday, this Wednesday, February nineteenth. The AHS Rachel's Closet ribbon cutting ceremony will take place at twelve thirty PM, and, uh, it will begin at one forty-five, the actual, at the junior high. The ceremony will begin junior high also at one forty-five. And this is where students from the school can visit, uh, the closet for clothing items, accessories, school supplies, and toiletries, and it's open after school, it's on, after school, there's no students.
Can I ask you a question? Did you get a ticket for the BGL tune again?
I did it.
Do that, I.
Thank you. Now, moving on, um, could I get a motion and a second for our special board meeting minutes from twelve sixteen nineteen, our house meeting on twelve sixteen nineteen? A regular board meeting on January sixth, November twenty, our house meeting on one twenty one, twenty twenty. Could I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion canceled. The next item is change order, correct my motion and the second one. Any discussion?
Question, uh, not really question, but comment on change order, age thirty-one and age thirty-two. But to say they were code interpretation, relevant to that, and it's pretty hard to drive the code, those bills were required, so that needs to move to, uh, protect whatever it's like. The, uh...
Which one of those you got, Eric?
The, uh, age thirty-one and age thirty-two.
Thirty-one and thirty-two need to move to air remission.
Yeah, I'd be able to do that. The, uh, change order ninety-three was with the breaker for the roof top ignition, fifteen, they wired it wrong. These contractors have to, have to start coordinating once themselves. We're getting down to the end, and I know everybody's gonna be rushed, and we're gonna keep getting more change orders later on, start coordinating between mechanical and electrical. The architectural engineer, or the, the mechanical engineer and the, and the electrical engineer are in the same office. This should be coordinated upfront. They had two chances, in the middle of the process, they had another chance to look at, make sure they got the, the voltage right. So I don't think we should approve that one, we need to work that out. And that would be change order ninety-three.
So you want a full change order ninety-three?
Yeah. And then, uh, my last comment is, between the allowance and the contingency, how do we determine what goes under the allowance and what goes under the contingency?
First of all, we weren't sure what we had in allowances, and now we're coming to the end of the project, things that can go into the allowances, I'm moving the allowances, and I'm making everyone aware that they're, they're change orders and they're going through the allowances, just for sake that you can have a better eye. No one really understands, no one has, is, how can I say this? The allowances are not obvious, so when they're zeroed out, or they're totally depleted, then we know what we have left in our change order account. And that was the driver behind it, was simply to, to take care of it through the allowances. I know that a lot of these things are minor electrical, or small, I'm gonna say minor, but small electrical POs, and we have a large electrical allowance specifically designed for those kinds of changes. So we've been running through that too.
Now, when it comes to allowance, are we paying for overhead and profit on that? I think we are.
It's, it's a change order.
But we already paid, paid overhead and profit on the allowance, because it is in the bid. That needs to be pulled out, correct? Paid for once in the bid, now we're paying for it as an overhead and profit by ten, again, in the change order. Comes out contingency, they should get the overhead profits coming out of the allowance, which was already in the contract. And that's a lot of money, because the allowance of all pre, all four contracts is seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Or allowances either way?
Allowances are in fact, uh, legal, um, but Eric raises the, the point, we, I'm gonna go back, I put one of you guys, but, you know, once again, construction managers take, take the bait at that. Um, if that is the case, nobody should get any additional monies for what has already been allocated as part of the overall bid that came in, those eighty-seven million dollars.
Um, after I talked with Eric just a minute, I did contact my office, because we were actually in partnership, and we're considering that.
I'll wait for the, um...
So Eric, can you tell us what change orders you're talking about, because they, they aren't numbered on here?
Okay, it would be, uh... Bearco Electric, Change Power Feed, Breaker for E fifteen, that's why it makes people. And the other two, that I was talking about, you give to air remissions, was, uh, at Checkville Building B and at Checkville Building C.
To the boilers?
Yes.
Also, do you want to tell us the issue with the, the rooftop unit, why, why you're saying that?
Why was?
Well, you said the one rooftop unit was the wrong voltage.
Everything was, I believe, four eighty on the roof, except for one rooftop unit was two oh eight.
Two oh eight?
Yes. And the electrical drawings showed everything on the roof, four eighty, and the technical drawings had that one unit at two oh eight.
So when they put power to it?
So when they put power to it, it was four eighty. But, I mean, this is big equipment, contractors can't just go, you know, just look at their drawings. When they, when they have this contract, they own all the drawings, and they have to start coordinating. Because I think a lot of these other ones that we had throughout this project, they would have just coordinated, we would be putting a receptacle here, but it needs to go over there. And that's just, I mean, it's nature of the project being, I mean, getting down to the end here. Everybody's rushing to get this done, so it can be done by the December, end of December, so... I'm just asking the contractor to just take some more care and, uh, and, uh, coordinate between each other so we can avoid some of these change orders.
I don't disagree. Uh, when they acquired that, when they interjoined that unit, they actually approved the verbal agreement. And we're making a responsibility for that class. Uh, we're, we're following the rules on the verticals. And, but he had also had copies of the standards for the HVC rooftop units. It was like, one out of fifteen was two oh eight, the rest were four eighty. So I don't disagree that they should bear some responsibility.
But shouldn't they also, or is that because of the architect and the engineer were paying the refeed and different breakers?
And, and they have, they have to run the proper now, uh, because of the voltage and different wear.
But, I mean, it's a really hard fault, that's why I bring it up.
It's not your fault, that's the architecture or oversight.
So what you're saying is the change order is primarily the difference in the length of the run that they have to make?
Yes, because they have to rewire, they have to rewire, and then rewire, and work on it. Because it has to go to a different panel in a different location now.
So then the change order is actually the difference between running the four eighty and running the two, the two, two oh eights, not running an additional two oh eight total?
No, which one, the two? They have to pull two oh eight back to the unit, all the way back to the breaker line, which is in a different location than the four eighty.
It's not a value-added change order, it's just pure, uh, pure out error. On part of whoever originally spec, inspected.
So it's an, it's an error in design, we get that. But the change order itself is for additional cabling necessary, not for the run that we've already paid for, but the cabling above and beyond that run, is that what you're saying?
Yes, they need to reuse the conduit, but they have to rewire from the new breaker implication to the unit and add a new breaker, and that becomes an air emission.
That said, I would recommend a door proof change order, if it's, if it's only for the additional wire in the, in the, installing the breaker in the panel, because that would be additional above and beyond regional contract. Now, the wire would make correct if they would have had it right from the beginning. Well, right, that's where the air emission comes in, but if I need fifty feet of wire in the original drawing, but I need two hundred feet of wire in, in, in order to make it work, then, then I'm charging for the additional hundred fifty feet. That would make sense, as, as an air remission change. First party labor in this two thousand dollars. I'm sure there is a.
Either eighteen dollars in labor, and... It's like around nine hundred dollars in insurance. So just twenty feet of heat conduiting?
Does that mean twenty more feet of cable, then? Does that mean twenty feet of conduit?
So does twenty feet conduit, you have to re-pull?
Yeah, they have to pull it way back, but if it was done right the first time, it would have pulled once. So if we want to pay for twenty feet of cable, I would like to pay whatever it is, fifty bucks for cable.
Pull, pull that change with, for further investigation. We're gonna amend the motion to withdraw that, that one change.
Okay, it's, Derek, go with the electric?
Barkford Electric. Um, Change Power Feed, yes, it is, correct, for two thousand forty-three.
We're gonna pull that.
We're pulling that one off the list. Those are just, those are just going to architectural areas, classification. Instead of code, instead of being code, the code, there were code violations caused by architectural error.
Correct, Eric? Correct.
Well, Eric brought up about, I get confused with this, but we have an allowance. Didn't you say we should use that money first?
I think we should use that money first, because we shouldn't be paying overhead and profit. So the change order should run through that first, until we run that run out of that. That's just my opinion, it's not legal, you know?
But you said, you don't pay the overhead on it.
Right, and then once that's exhausted, then we should go to the contingency plan. Because we come out of this with money left over in the allowance, we just paid overhead and profit on money we're getting back. Which is stupid.
How much is there now?
I don't, I know the initial amount was seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, a little bit over that, but how, how much was used out of that?
It's about half. I don't have the exact number in front of me.
Yep, I don't have it. So we're gonna use four hundred thousand, but in eight months, or ten months?
What, the... Substantial completion of the building itself should be by mid-June at this point.
Of the new building?
Of the new building, and then any other contingencies. We, our bulk is in electric right now, which is approximately three hundred, I would say there's three hundred and twenty or three hundred and thirty thousand electric allowance still.
Thirty-six, all left? Yeah, three hundred thousand.
And that's all gonna be in the big building. I don't know if we're gonna have that many. I really don't know if we're gonna have that many change orders in electrical.
Right, I don't think we will either, so now we just pay, can we move some of these change orders we already paid or through the allowance, take off the overhead and profit?
If they haven't been written, processed yet.
I mean, if they have been processed.
Uh, they're fully executed.
No.
Yeah, Carl, I, I would do, I would assume not, because we're not.
So now we're just gonna lose fifteen percent overhead and profit, because we didn't put the money in the right place?
If they were not entitled to it, uh, you're gonna be with the group that bit, again.
Okay.
So can we review all the change orders and see if they got paid that extra money and take that back?
It just be the allowance, is what you're referring to.
Right, just the allowance, so we can look at it.
We can look at the change orders, too?
But they were already processed, how do we fix it?
I think you could look at them and just see what, what it is, and see what they might be willing to do within the scheme of things.
As a way to offset it.
Uh, I would check and ask, and ask Reynolds to work to see if we can get offset, to adjust their money.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not, they didn't, like, say, I'm not the one to call that, you know what I mean? When, you know, using contingency first as opposed to going to allowance. But I did make note that this will never happen again, you know, at least in any construction project.
Okay, I will work back through my office, and, uh, DCBA, your tip is actually integral documents. So I'll get in touch with one of my team before you and Mike Kelly, we have to get everything done. So I'll get in touch with one of my team before you and Mike Kelly, we have to get everything done and then whatever they come up with back to Carl. And see what we can give them.
Okay, now, we are going to, we need another motion.
You amend it.
Or amend the motion, the motion that we have eliminating Barfield Electric for two thousand forty three dollars.
You never made the second, has to be.
I'll second. Any further conversation?
Sorry, can we clarify the amendments, we're, we're removed, we're taking out the two thousand forty three, and what about the other?
Changing the classification.
Just making sure that I'm clear.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, list of payments. Do I have a motion? Okay, yeah, there's.
Well, actually, the consent is broken up into the subcaps, when we would have it all organized a little better.
Yes, yes.
So we've broken up the new structure, you'll see they're all followed by consent, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Or would have been the previous consent agenda, but they're broken into classifications.
Okay, so we'll take my name, items together, um, the list of payments, the financial reports. Educational support grant. Um, out to junior high, educational support grant Baker, all fights. Field trip for district six boys and girls playoff game, and all wishes. That is all, can I have a motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Okay, so we're doing all of this at one time?
The final.
Just do it fine.
Oh, just fine.
Six finance consent.
Okay, I thought, sorry, I'm good.
And just one question, the field trip for district six boys and girls.
That's, that's a preferred section.
She did, that's why I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why I was confused.
Okay, got it.
Yes, listed as finance.
Now, I don't have that. I have under finance.
It's under education, I think.
Yeah, I have under finance, just listed payment amounts, financial reports, educational support grant, education support grant for, one for the junior high school, one for Baker and all fights.
Okay. So do we want to make that, do we have to separate?
No, just ask.
It doesn't matter, I, that, those are fine with me.
Go ahead, Derek.
And what's, what's the field trip, who's that?
We'll take student bus, yeah, student bus on Friday. One bus, about forty kids, fifty kids?
We have forty one sign up.
Any more comment?
That's Luke's ticket, right?
No, they buy the ticket separately, they buy them online.
The price included the ticket, the six dollars, it was on field trip request, yeah? Yeah?
Buy the ticket and one to the reception.
Correct.
Any more questions or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Community. Central water recreation commission. Community collaborative, and that's all for those items, um, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Contracted services. LPN nurse contracted service. Out to the area, area public library contribution. Rescue task force training, and that's all in that motion, can I have a motion and a second?
Make that motion.
What's that? Any comments or questions?
I have one question, Camilla. I would like to discuss the library at the finance committee. Okay, is there any reason why we can't do that in March?
We can do that.
Apologize to the board, I didn't catch that until this afternoon. Thank you. So I would respect your request, I'd like to pull that until we can discuss it again, finish it up with the finance.
I'll withdraw my motion, or my second.
I will amend the motion.
Second.
Any further comments?
The question I would have, I see Jennifer's here, I know they use these as matching funds, these bodies. Will that do anything with your sequence of when you need to have these funds made available?
No, no, March, you're fine. April will be. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Education. New force groupers. Volunteers. Secondary field trips. Elementary field trips. School calendar. Alternative school district twenty twenty spring athletic schedules. Athletic spring sports equipment. Athletic transition plan. Yeah, I was going to do them all together. High school schedule. JPO SAP agreement. PMEA reaching chorus festival twenty twenty two. AAHS twenty twenty summer school proposal. And that should be it. Can we get a motion?
Second.
And a second?
Second.
Now, any questions or comments?
Well, under, I think it's a letter I. I would like the sixth grade girls and boys basketball pulled out for separate, so. I believe we should do that at CBRC, or that would take money away from them, if we take that program tonight. We're already going to use our gyms anyhow like it, it was before, I just think they should keep that program, we're going to lose money on it. We talked about it, I think, with the finance committee, and it's a, a money mover for the school district, so I'd like to leave this there, so I'd like to separate them.
Okay, all right, athletic transition plan is what you're referring to?
Well, just the, the one thing out of that, if we're.
You'd like to pull that one for separate?
Or sixth grade boys and girls basketball.
So just a portion of this, then?
Well, just, actually, I like the school calendar.
You want full or you want separate?
I want separate.
Okay.
Great sports transition.
School calendar.
Down.
High school schedule.
Okay, so all of the ones that I've read, we are going to separate, you know, school calendar for a separate note. Athletic transition plan, but only a portion of that.
Sixth grade, boys and girls basketball.
And the high school schedule, the A period, that is what you would like to, okay. Can we have a motion with pulling those items?
My questions are pertaining to those.
Oh, your question was into it.
Yeah, they're, they're pertaining to those items, so that's fine.
Any other questions? Do we have to change our motion?
Let's do that, who seconded?
Yes.
I had Mr. Johnston make the motion, and Mr. Francis seconded.
Yeah, I called my second.
Maybe you meant, like, can you, oh, I made your motion for.
Yes.
Okay, so we're on men's motion, second from Mr. Francis.
Okay, if there's any further discussion on the items that are included in this motion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now, we will do these items one by one. The first one is going to be district calendar.
Yeah, the graduation date. Yeah, I was, I was, wasn't around you when you approved the graduation dates for, uh, this year, but, uh. How can you have graduation on the eleventh, and rain dates the twelfth and thirteenth? People come in for the weekend for graduation, they're not coming here for a week. So what you should do, uh, is get our auditorium set for, for a rain day. And then you have a beautiful stage you're going to have at the new high school where people can come in and watch a big screen on graduation. And make sure that just parents can take it to the graduation if it's inside. And have the same date, graduation date. And if it's nice out, we go outside. So it's not hard, you don't need three days for graduation. You know. I remember when I, say like during the service, you come in on the weekend, leave to see your brother graduating. You know, you're not going to do that, and you have to go, go work. Make, just have graduation Monday, that's all I'm asking, because years ago, uh, we had graduation inside, the little kids graduated back there. And we didn't have any problems. Then all of a sudden, we're having problems, I think, the way tickets are handed out, in all honesty, is the problem. You know, it's the parents, of course, if there's any tickets left over, then, you know, have us a drawing or something, there are tickets, but, uh.
So, Mr. Francis, last year's graduation, uh, we had that overflow in the auditorium setup, we had.
But still, so many complaints.
No, but, wait, wait, we had the overflow in the auditorium, but there were people that were in the overflow that had tickets that weren't allowed in, so. I, I think that needs to be regulated, the people with tickets need to be allowed in, even if it's standing room or whatever, I mean, we can, we can only allot for the tickets, I think, that we, we can seat.
That's exactly, exactly right.
We were, I'm not going to rehash.
Yeah, I understand that, but just, just if we could do that, that's all I'm saying, do we have one graduation, I don't have anyone else on the board.
And. I don't know, wait, Frank, you have a comment?
Parents with tickets should be allowed in, last year before somebody board member called, there was parents here, it just means if we had tickets, we couldn't get in.
Right.
That was wrong.
It's done, that's done, that's over, so we can just prevent it.
We look into the Jaffa at all, is my question. Because my theory was, if we, if we gave the Jaffa a retainer fee, that would be lost. That we could use that as.
Minimize that. The, the challenge this year is that the Jaffa was not available.
No, I know, but upcoming years, if we get on the retainer, they'll hold that day for us.
They'll hold a week for us.
Yeah, but how much is the retainer?
If I may. We'd like to have graduation outside. I'm not going to kid anybody, I think we needed to have a rain day. I've dealt with outside graduations and, and they've always had a rain day or some kind of rain backup. Usually since the, the day right after. I knew the board wanted to have graduation on Friday, I knew the board wanted to have it on a weekend, so that, so that people would get in and could, and could do what they needed to do, they're celebrating, et cetera, and they, because they, they have to be able to make the travel plan. So that's when I said, we do a Friday night graduation outside, or we do a Saturday rain day graduation, and if those are all rained out, then we would go to the Sunday at the Jaffa. We could also do a backup, we're, we, we, and we can't do it for this year, but we can do it for next year, we can set the, the Jaffa as the backup on, on Saturday.
I don't understand, I don't understand why you can't do it to Sunday, I, this, I was on the board for twenty five years. And we had rain, rain day graduation, and we brought them inside, it was very simple, you know, there's, there's a message on television, hey, graduation's inside.
Okay.
And then, and watch your tickets how they're sold, and make sure that parents get in. And then you have Uber for you to take them to the new auditorium.
The.
You should have it the same day, you don't need two days.
I, I would agree, I, I was your opinion myself, March. Participated in many graduation ceremonies, and now, we did have it that way, in fact, we had it outside and started to rain, we all got so, we all got to a, a way home. But, um, I, I think having it on a particular day does a number of things, for one thing, I know a lot of students, they graduate, they start heading to the shore, you know, not their parents' approval, but they, they do that. And, uh, and people do come in from out of town for this, but I, I think it could be managed, if we can't go outside, you have it inside, limit who gets the tickets. You know how many can fit in the auditorium or in the gymnasium, limit the number of tickets a student gets according to that number. Hit the students first, because it's, the student graduating, and it's an honor to their family, so let's respect that and find a way to make it work.
The, uh. With all due respect to everyone, we can do it that way? There was, there was a, an issue last year. But the reality is, that issue could have happened, it probably did happen, in a non-Facebook era. When one parent just goes on a rampage and attacks the district, and the next thing we know, uh, we're, we're all re-cordling. Last week at the BEG game. That was driven, I believe, by one parent online. We had a situation with an issue at, at Manchur Park last fall, where there was a theft. And an outrage was initiated on Facebook by one parent. We're all running around, like chickens with our heads cut off, trying to, to solve an issue driven by one parent's complaint, and an event that, quite frankly, we had no control over. Okay? The, my purpose in setting it up with a rain day was specifically to have it outside where there would be the least amount of issues with people seeing the event. And creating a, a, a plan where we could ensure that all the people who wanted to see the kids graduate could. We can change it for next year, we want to have it all on one day, but understand, if I give out two tickets to every child, or four tickets to every child, and I give out no spares, and I create a wait line. Basically, you get in if there's space, or you got to go to the auditorium, we can do that. But we will be, we will be lambasted through social media. And.
You know, these people are cowards on social media, don't attach to anything, and, you know, you can't, you can't be fixed, can just take it, if someone complains, let them complain. I get calls all the time, what are you going to do, things happen.
Is, okay, well, Dave, I, I appreciate that, I really do. Is that the summit of the entire board?
I don't know.
Because-
I, I just-
Because I get, because me being the pinata last graduation.
Well, that wasn't your fault, believe me.
But, but you, but you realize, but you, but you realize that, that there might have been a staff move. There might have been an issue, but it was, it was.
Well, there was a staff move and there was an issue. We had fake tickets. Yeah, fake tickets. How did this happen?
All you need is a good copy of this.
So my, my whole point is, the reason we did it, or that we did it this year, was to ensure at all costs we could have it outside. So when you have a backup lineup with Jaffa, we could look at, at next year, 2021, just flat out, we're going to have it Friday night. And we're going to, we're going to rent the Jaffa because now we have the lead time to have the Jaffa as a backup. Lord knows enough people in this room are tied to the Jaffa now.
That's, that's all I'm asking is for next year. Not asking for this year, but I've done it.
We want the capability next year to have the entire-
If I was here for that meeting, I'd be saying the same thing for this year, but I couldn't make it.
The only difference this year is because of late requests, that's a busy time for dance recitals and whatnot. The only date that they could secure us was the Sunday. So we secured the Sunday, but moving forward, with the flexibility of having the entire week, that we could set the date and have that date either be an outside or inside graduation.
And the other? The other thing we've done is we've created a hard graduation date from the standpoint, it's a grad, the graduation weekend is set. Which means if, if for some reason we have nine, 10 snow days, then we'll be bringing seniors in on Saturdays to do classes so that they'll graduate on time. I mean, that's, it's just going to be the reality. We have a hard graduation day. So, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be, this year, it's going to be the, was it the 5th or the 4th?
It's the 5th. Graduation's set for the 5th. Two, a morning and an afternoon alternate times. We have rain and then a Sunday drop, you know, a Sunday date for the Jaffa, which is already secured.
And all I'm asking is the graduation is extended 6/11/21. That's all.
Got it.
We can do that.
We can do that.
Absolutely.
I, I want to, I just want everybody to understand that I was driving that. Because I wanted to have, I wanted to have it outside if at all possible. Because that is the venue that does accommodate the vast majority of whoever wants to come, so.
So we're going to set the graduation date for Friday, the 11th.
It'll be Friday 11th and we'll have, and it will be an alternate site for rain day, which will probably be the Jaffa.
Will be the Jaffa. So we're covered. We're getting enough people in there that the students have their way. Because like, you know, that was the frustration last year. There were parents that had to sit in the auditorium and watch it and they had to, so.
We've had games with the Jaffa. Their, their accommodations are more than enough for, actually more than two tickets per student. As well as staging areas and things that we need. We can provide our own security that are doing very accommodating with us, so absolutely.
The Jaffa holds approximately 1,200 more than what the Fieldhouse does. So that's, it's, it's a nice, it's a large venue.
Okay, so my question on the school calendar was, were you able to look at that January 22nd date for any service?
Yeah, as I discussed with you on the phone, what drove that was because we're starting on 31st. We need the time to get the building ready, et cetera, plus later it is extremely late. Patty, could you elaborate as to why we needed to have it there? Because I believe it has to deal with the amount of time that the teachers have to prepare grades, et cetera.
Yes, we're coming, just a second. We're coming back on the January 4th. And so we wanted to make sure that there was enough time for teachers to be able to prepare for their, their grades. And so the end of the marking period is the 26th. So if they only, if they have that 15 off, then that would be more difficult for them to be prepared and they would not have enough time to prepare, so.
So is the 20, is the 22nd date just simply a workday? Is that, or is it an in-service?
It's an in-service day.
So what's, I don't understand what the difference is. They're both before the end of the marking period.
One of the main drivers is the week of the 11th is the second wave of the Keystone exams. So we need to have that entirety, the weekly testing. The Keystone runs in a winter wave one and a winter wave two. One's in December, one's in January. So all of our winter wave testing. So when we get back on the 4th, we'll have two weeks to do all of our winter Keystone testing. And losing one a day, I, it doesn't seem any significant. It is, with packing and getting ready. If we test winter wave over a thousand kids in high school, because it's all of our makeups.
The same thing is true with bath testing too. That's so that the teachers can be prepared to meet their children where they are then on that, on the third marking period.
They'll, they'll be doing all their data analysis on that day and their recruitment for the, for the spring semester. This only occurs this year because of the fact, our, 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 it's already so late. Next year it will go back to normal and it'll basically, it'll be that four day weekend we were talking about, but this year it's two threes.
Okay, any more comment on this? So now we are, if I have this right, we are voting.
Hi, Rick. Sorry.
We are voting on this calendar with the exception of graduation day, it's going to be Friday, the 11th of June.
And the, and the alternative makeup will be at Sunday.
So it is definitely, yes.
It'll occur on that day.
It will occur on that day. Otherwise, the schedule is okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This is very hard to have it recorded as any motions. Okay, then we'll start again. Can I have a motion on the calendar?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, athletic transition plan. Can I have a motion for that?
No.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
Are we doing this without the sixth grade? That's, that is my question.
Without the sixth grade, we're open for boys' basketball.
Okay, are we, are we going to discuss that separately or?
We already did that.
We have everything but the boys' and girls' basketball.
Yeah, we are now doing.
Oh, okay.
These are the ones we separated.
Okay.
So, we want to work with-
I want them to keep six and seven, sixth grade, boys and girls basketball.
Okay, why? I, I just want to know why.
Well, for us to do it, it's going to be three or four thousand dollars more because we didn't figure a retirement, what we're really paying. And we're already, they already got told making money over there. We, we raised what we gave them already this year. So if we pull sixth grade for that, they're going to lose more money apparently. And I just can't finish and say that.
Now, if I may, just, the sixth grade league that we're proposing would run independent of CBRC. CBRC said, talk to the state over, they will still be able to run their sixth grade basketball league. And students from the junior high school that are in sixth grade would have the capability of participating in that league. It will not, the Saturday, Sunday will not interfere with when they typically schedule their games. We're hoping to have that opportunity as a build-in for our students in sixth grade that are now moving into the junior high school. So that they have an athletic opportunity where they do not have to go back to a random pool of students to put together teams. One of the things that we looked at with transition was the motivation, was that the students in sixth grade who are now attending the junior high school have built-in athletic opportunities that otherwise would not be afforded to them out having to go back to their sending elementary school in order for that to take place. We wanted them to have, aware of their original ways opposed to whatever elementary school that they had left that would normally have been attending, but are no longer there, junior high students. We organized the league and put the proposal together based on opportunities for every student, whether they're male, female. There'll be no cuts. They'll have the opportunity to organize teams and then bring some outside teams in on that Saturday and Sunday league. And if you look at the cost analysis, we adjusted that with the volunteer coaching staff that we had discussed. The modification to the sixth grade basketball coordinator and with ticket price adjustments. We were showing an estimated profit of three to 4,000. With our Peasars reimbursement on the amount that we would pay, which you were correctly pointing that out. We believe that it will be at worst break even based on the, the numbers that we have run, which we believe are a concern.
And that's, you're basing that off of every parent, every kid, every child, or any two parents at the game?
Not every, our parents. Not, not even considering out the outside teams. We're hoping to generate four to six outside teams to be a part of the league. Each of which will pay a registration fee of three to 400 dollars, plus the parents and guests that they bring to the games as well. We didn't factor in any concessions either. We would use for CBRC ability to sell, you know, significantly concessions going to these leagues as well. That would, that would profit student activities groups and or the program directly.
So, so are you saying CBRC is planning to run a league also so the kids would have the ability to play in both leagues?
Correct. So let's say a parent were, or wanted to organize a group of three to four teams. Then we will organize teams that they will play in, in our league, that will guarantee those kids, every kid, the opportunity to play sixth grade basketball. And then if parents wanted to organize or volunteer, do whatever, a team to put in the CBRC league, which is how they are now. They're, they're not just school-based, there's teams that are, you know, kind of club teams, organized teams that others put together. They can still go play in the league. There wouldn't be any keeping that. There wouldn't be any keeping our own people from organizing a team to go and play in that league, or multiple teams to go and play in that league. After tonight's vote, we had planned on meeting with Mr. Hofer to talk about, because the first thing I said is the last thing I want to do is, is hurt your league, you know. But we want to make sure that we have an opportunity for our sixth graders to participate in, in, in a junior high school-based league for sixth graders. Since they're non-P I N O way, we have to do that through, through a rec league type setup.
I agree with you. What you, what you said about kids guaranteed to play. Yeah, and if you go to a market and rec, you're not guaranteed, but you have to probably pick one of the kids.
Well, the way they're playing well-
Right now, you're guaranteed to play.
Yeah, but, but if they, but they go to a, ours, and then guys pick one.
If we have 80 kids turn up to play junior high basketball, 80 kids will play. 80 kids will be our team.
If the sixth grader are going to the market rec, so I'm coaching the sixth grade, and I want the five best players from sixth grade. And, you know, the other kids, you know, there's kids won't be able to play that aren't good enough for playing in the market rec.
Well, because they're not going to be at the elementary schools, there's, right now they're organized by elementary schools. There're not going to be any elementary schools. So we have to have a way to organize it for them. And the way to organize it for them was to have a league that we will run open gyms, we will have a, a team selection process. Really run and generated by the high school and junior high school staff, as well as this elementary basketball coordinator that would then acquisitively pick teams, volunteer coaches, they will play in that league, we're thinking 16 games. And they would have the opportunity to go and play in other leagues, you know, play in CBRC if, if they, if they choose to do so.
If they get picked.
If they get picked or if there's, someone organizes, hey, let's get a team together.
But you'll coordinate with CBRC so the kids could, could play in both and won't be punished if they're playing in-
We'll make sure we're schedule-wise, if there's, there's no conflict. If they want, CBRC runs Tuesdays, we won't have any scheduled Tuesdays. Our, right now, we're looking at Saturday and Sunday because of Jiminy Island Dory. So that, that's our, our primary motivator right now. Like, we run a seventh grade league currently, that our kids that play P I N O way, they play a regular schedule. But we want to run our rec seventh grade league at the junior high school on Saturday mornings. This will be run very similar to that. We currently have two teams, 15 from all of the county, 15 are going to play in that league. We've already reached out to a lot of the local schools in, in nearby Cambria and Blair County to see if they have an interest in playing our league, and they do, so.
Okay, so I'm in favor of this league. I'm not opposed to it, but I called Phil today because my question is, I have been to those Saturday morning leagues so many times and they do not have a ticket seller, a ticket taker, and two people for crowd control. So I really think that we need to contact Duck Pepper, who's the coordinator, and find out how many workers we need. Because I do not think, I think we are overstaffing a game. There aren't kids in the building on a Saturday and Sunday. So there's usually only parents and siblings there. The kids have come, you know, 15 minutes before their game and, and then, you know, they leave after their game, so.
You're saying we don't need those.
I'm saying, I don't think we need this many workers. It's not on a school day. So it's not like kids are coming down after school that we need to control the crowd. And I, I mean, I'm, I'm telling you now that they don't have that many people on the Saturday morning league.
Well, like, we had talked to Athletic Council. We could start with minimal and then add if necessary.
Right.
So if the board considers, you know, approving, approving that plan, we will definitely look, we'll go back and look at organizational-wise, what is needed? What is the bare minimum? Start with that, do a cost analysis the first couple of weeks, see where it falls, and then, and then adjust from there if necessary.
Okay. I mean, I'm saying you can probably talk to Duck Pepper. He can probably tell you what's needed, like, worker-wise, you know. I mean, I know you want to have accountability for how many tickets are sold, how many, you know. You, you need to have some sort of checks and balances. But I'm saying that there, there are not that many people needed on a Saturday or Sunday game. They don't have it at the rec now and, you know, I mean, I know there are some issues, but the issues are minimal.
I, I've been, I mean, JMC, they're on the, they're the ticket taker. It's a, it's a high school student. And then they have the school keeper, and then they have their officials. So we, like I said, we can look at minimal coverage to start, do an analysis of the first couple of weeks. Obviously, we're trying to err on the side of caution first time through.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that was my hangup with, like, looking at this, you know, the expenses that I really think we need to reevaluate that. Like, I don't want to approve the plan with this in place, I guess, is my, is my thought.
I understand. If it's such a good idea, why are we doing it for volleyball, sixth grade volleyball? Talk, talk to them about volleyball. Their preference on volleyball is that, that we were going to, we're looking at adding volleyball. We want to start block quarter run. And I talked to Mike and, and they're playing with volleyballs that basically do it the same way. We would be responsible for recruitment. We would send out the, because they run two leagues, two segments. They do like a lake fall and an Earl's Grand Lake winter. So they actually have two leagues they run. Now, what they would have requested is that for organizational purposes, they're going to put a line on it as to what elementary school did you attend. So when they get all of the applications that come in, they have a way of organizing teams to make sure that they have, you know, viable coaches for each of the teams. And, and like I said, we'll work out whatever logistics with CBRC. They're a good partner. We want to partner with them. We don't want to, it's not a competition. We just want to provide for our student and our student athletes to make sure that they all have a great experience, you know, especially their first year in sixth grade at the, at the new junior high school. Who's going to pick the coaches for these teams? Well, if it's CBRC, they reach out. So they do a thing through the application process. If it's through us, the, we'll gauge interest. You know, there'll be basically a volunteer, they'll have a volunteer package, like any other volunteer in the district. They'll actually have their clearances, and then from there, the, the league coordinator will be in charge of organizing the teams with volunteer coaches. Once you have the teams put together, then you would solicit, okay, who are my people who are interested in coaching? And if we have people that are non-parents or non-affiliated, then we would have a pool of folks that would be willing to do it as well on a volunteer basis. These kids, these coaches are coaching these kids fourth grade basketball, fifth grade basketball. And sixth grade, you're just going to take that team away and give them a brand, they're going to, they're not going to- Well, here, here's, it doesn't exist. I mean, that's six, they're not in an elementary school. No, it's still the kids, it's still the kids that the coach has had all through, and he's been volunteering.
The parent who was a volunteer in fourth and fifth grade?
It's the same one that would be volunteering.
They're going to volunteer in sixth grade as well.
But they're not getting the same kids because no, school districts.
They're not going to get the same kids, no.
From my experience, I'm happy to, to have a fair team because, I mean, you play by school right now. The, the teams are so lopsided that it's, you know, it, it would be nice to have the kids distributed on a more equitable basis. I mean, that, that's my personal thought, and I, I have volunteered. I've been coaching for, you know, this is my fourth year of coaching now, so. I got strong opinions about it.
I mean, I can assure you, the, the goal is to make sure that we have maximum opportunity for students.
What does CBRC charge to go to a game?
Yeah, the ones that I've been to, they're kind of floating. It's like for one person, for two people, or two and a couple kids, for a family package, it's like-
It's $2 for an adult, $1 for a child, $5 for a family.
And you think that us charging $4 per person is in form to affect people coming to the game?
Well, once again, that's, we're trying to keep it consistent with what we're looking at charging across the board for athletic entry.
I'm, I'm just worried that that'll limit how many people come.
What, what do they charge for Saturday morning league right now?
Three. Three and one, correct? I think it's three and one. We have requested the last Athletic Council, we need to increase the price.
Right.
I mean, these games, they're, they're short. These games are, you know, you're talking 45 to 50 minutes typically. These games will run like two eighteen and a half, running clock. So, I mean, they're only going to last 45, 50 minutes.
I mean, in my opinion, we could relook at the ticket price. I mean, in my opinion, we could relook at the ticket price for sixth grade, because the, the tick, the reason we raised the ticket price was because people were going to the junior high to buy a ticket, and then going over to the high school to attend a game on that same ticket. So we wanted to make the ticket price consistent. But if the, if these are games on Saturday and Sunday, then it's not something that they're going to be going over to attend a different game.
And if you lower the price, then the income's going to change, and then we're really.
Yeah, but we're taking away some of these workers too.
Okay, so. Are we changing this or keeping this as it is? So hold on it.
So keep it as this?
Keep it as this, okay. All in favor?
Wait, what do we mean keep it as this? Are we keeping up with the, the same?
As it's written.
As it's written.
In the agenda.
So, uh, with the same amount of workers here?
I don't think that's, that's necessarily has to be a key with the, uh.
Okay, so we're just talking about the program in general, okay? I just want to be clear, sorry.
Just the programs, so.
Okay, so we're keeping it as it is right now. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Do you oppose?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next, um, item? High school schedule, do you need a, um, motion and a second? I'll second that. Um, discussion.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea, I, I, you know, if that's what administration wants, actually, we should. We need to build better education than it's done in the junior high, so it's actually consistency, continuity.
Any other questions?
I, I, Charlie and Dave, I think it's a, an idea that's worthy of implementing. I, I think, well, one of the things I could say from my psychologist head on the first fifteen or twenty minutes of the class period is the prime time. And after that, you start getting tired and lose concentration and so forth. But I think it's a good idea to, students an opportunity to take more electives, different electives, and, um, we can have an overall good effect on our education program.
I, I think, um, you think about just the numbers, two of the four classes that will be in the new building are coming directly from a building that has an eight period day. Uh, and next year's eleventh grade class will have done just one year under the, the current seven period schedule, so. There have been discussions about how those students could react to that, but I think basically three quarters of them are very familiar with that eight period day.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Do you oppose? Mr. Hoff?
Mr. Hoff, Mr. Cruz.
Motion passes. Now, business operations, consent agenda, Amtran STA must drivers, first reading, thirty day review policies. And just those two items, then I have a motion.
Motion. Second.
Second. Any comments? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, new business. Capital reserve list of payments. Capital project list of payment. Warehouse space rental.
I might move these individually, sure.
Do you want to do them all individually?
We need to try to put the list of payments and the project, reserve list and the project together.
Then, the motion will be capital reserve list of payments and capital project list of payment. Do I have a motion?
Some moves.
Second.
Second.
Okay, comments? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, you want to do the next two separate?
Yeah.
Okay, warehouse space rental, can we have a motion for that?
Some move.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
I, I, sorry.
I, um, what, why do we need to?
I was going to have to like explain.
In, in the time between the ISB.
Doc, can you get our microphone?
In the, in the time between when the ISB renovations are complete, and the time that we need to move out of this building, we need a space to store the furniture that will eventually go into the ISB building. Um, we're moving, the, we're moving business officer, GACTC, model of the furniture will fit over there. So this warehouse space that you'll buttered building is close to the school, gets climate control, gets dry. You know, we, we get back and forth really quickly. Um, there will also be, as we empty out this school, um, in June, there will be a number of items that will be, to be stored that won't go into either A building or B building. That may not go over to any auction.
Then we have the fur warehouse?
We do, and we were out there, the, I was with the auction company last week. Uh, they took a lot of photos out there, uh, Sue and I are discussing the schedule. Uh, maybe they could have the fur morgue sale, except we plan item sale for this building, so we could clear the fur building out, but as of right now, fur building is whole, whole.
So, is there anything in there we can dispose of without an auction? Is there anything that we really don't need? It's not going to get any money from anybody.
We have been. We, yeah, we have been working through that. Um, I've, I've heard that we really are going to have a lot of square footage of space. Um, we look at one bay as something like twenty foot by foot, uh, and thirty cents a square foot. It's, uh, a few hundred dollars a month rental for a few months. Um, primarily, we are looking at the things that we know we are willing to use, which is the furniture for, for industrial boxes.
So you, you're saying the total cost per month would be, I know it's three cents per square foot, but what would the total cost be?
Sixty times thirty.
We estimated three hundred and sixty, it was almost twelve hundred square feet. And the rental income from the parking lot leases at the ISB building is six hundred and thirty dollars. So we have that revenue to offset.
Particularly the cost, or it's, we have a warehouse. Eventually, we'll be, you know, things auctioned out, then we could put this in, right?
Yes, and.
So, is this, would this be like a contingency thing, like, we'll prove it, then you can don't beat it, or?
Yes, and it, and it's also a variable rate, so that if we, if we use a small amount, we pay a small amount, if we use a larger amount, we pay a little bit more, they're willing to adjust it, adjust it, the total cost every single month.
So if, if we do the work, if we, you know, the fur, if it's a room at the fur building, we want to.
Correct.
Okay, that's fair.
Any other comments, conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item is tax collection agreement, city of Altona. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Any comments? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mansion Park ADA accessible restaurants, this is discussion currently.
Yes, um, I've had discussions with, with the facilities committee, Ed Cruz, Ron Johnson, Eric Pomp. Um, we've got some options, and there were some other options that came through discussions over the weekend. Doug and I were out there today, we plan to be starting to work on one of those options today, tomorrow. Um, we feel that we may have a very viable solution. Now, the, the, the step is, there is a, there's an extremely, a long restroom. We're talking, the girls restroom on the home side by the concession stand is ten units, at least, is it ten or eleven?
Ten, nine or ten.
And we plan to take the back four of those and turn those into two full-size handicap restrooms, one male and one female. We need to look at, we need to look at the price of doors, we need to look at, at how we're going to handle the block, but we're going to create two separate restrooms, and that will be step one. And then, and, now, this is all pending discussion with facilities committee, which is next week, but this is what we're looking at for even facilities committee on the twenty-seventh, is it twenty, yeah, twenty-seventh.
Third and end of twenty-seventh.
Next third. And then we will look at, at other options, because there, there is bigger, bigger restrooms on the wayside, and there's one other set of smaller or more compact restrooms down the end of state. But we are going to discuss it with facilities and come up with at least proposal for that, that area I just talked about, on the concession stand. Okay, want to add anything else?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Eric, any?
I agree.
Just wanted to share that with everybody, um, we are moving on the, on the, on the ADA restrooms. I am becoming an expert in ADA, so, one step at a time. We are also, I don't know if you're aware of it, we are working on a, on a railing solution. It's not going to be quick, because there's a lot of things going on, and we are working on that also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Altona area, public library park, east here, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. District administrative offices, do I have a motion?
Some move.
A second?
Kill.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Dave, would you like to come up and watch everybody through real quick? Primarily, these are the, uh, these are the changes that the board has requested to the, um, to the contracts and to the construction process that the board passed in December.
Yeah, that's correct, given, so, um, at that time, the board asked that we investigate some cost reductions. Uh, we had some things in the original bid that we were able to target quickly, and then we had some other, uh, items, um, that we were, we had developed some drawings and go through the whole process with contractors. So the three kind of packages you have of change orders are site work, uh, some work that was done post-bid, uh, some adjustments to the layout on the ground floor, and the work in the basement. So I'll take them in order, site work, we had E dot dollar, that's to pull all of the work that we were going to do up there, or out there. So the expansion of those parking lots by taking down the ATM building and drive up talent, uh, and then being able to change curves and, and do all the things we needed to do to gain you about fourteen spaces. So, uh, we pulled that money directly out. So we had about, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars there, uh, undergating the general construction contract, and seventeen in the electrical contract, those were the only two contracts that, that site. However, there are things that were required by, uh, city planning that we had to put back in. So we pulled it a hundred percent out, that we had to add back in, um, the remainder. Uh, the, um, the, uh, net gain is a fifty-eight thousand dollar, four hundred fifty-three, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollar, fifty-five cent credit from the general construction contract, and a fifteen thousand, six hundred seventy-eight credit from the electrical construction contract. So when we're done with everything, we compliant, we have a, an approved and, um, compliant site plan for planning, um, we will be able to get our permanent building contract, they'll be permitted out of that. Um, and, um, we will save altogether about seventy-four thousand, seven, seventy-four thousand dollars on that portion of our. The ground level work, with just some adjustments that came back from administration on movement of some partitions and the way that a few, uh, spaces were arranged on the ground floor, it was really, you know, taking a, a partition here and putting it there, you know, changing some lights out, things like that. It's a zero-cost change order, uh, on three contracts, the general, the, uh, HVAC, and the electrical plumbing is not involved. Then we get to the basement level. Uh, we had the alternate of going from the police to the training room. So that had cut some money out in the bid, but then to take all the finishes out of the training room option, basically, um, and still prep to the point that you could go back in and easily make those, uh, fit outs in the future. So by having, um, the prep work and the HVAC work prepped in, uh, with, with ductwork distribution, with having the, um, plumbing work done, just with the underground sanitary work, so that the slab gets cut up and that pipe gets in, put pipe in place, everything's tied and kept up. Uh, electrical work was just kind of a code minimum, really weren't improvements down there, it's just a basic life safety and fire. Uh, and then the general work, uh, was limited to a little bit of the work that they had to do with some demo that led us to, we'll be able to do a plumbing and things. Um, so that altogether, so that affects all four prime contracts, and altogether, we're getting a credit back of thirty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents. So we have, I've been able to, uh, get these change orders on the table, uh, a hundred and six thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and thirty-five cents. So about ten percent, uh, of the, um, contracts in place.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Charter and cyber school, three points.
This is similar to the resolution that the board passed last year. It's a way for us to keep our voice heard here as regards our, our need for charter school reform.
Do you have a motion and second?
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Property? Can I have a motion for that?
No move. I'll second.
Discussion, questions?
Another discussion we had earlier, this property, can we table this?
You're requesting a table?
Yeah, I just, we can table this, we can have a discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, let's take it. Returning incentive, can I have a motion?
Some move.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Teen doctor agreements?
Still move.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Adult education. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table the decision on this matter and further study the impact on the community. And I think of a cell that pointed out by Tina D, the safety net effect that this program has for a community and gives people who did not have the opportunity or able to get a high school diploma that opportunity for getting the diploma and further advancing themselves. So, I I moved up the motion to table this matter.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's taken.
You know, we could have, I think we could have taken a vote, 'cause I'm very strongly, uh, for these guys to keep our adult. And I said it before and I'll say it again, is that we have the probably about the best adult education staff. And I've known for all the years I've been around, and I see what these guys do. And and I talk to, uh, and I talk to people who graduated or involved with it, that some of these people have checked their path, and they're gonna try to do the best they can. And some, uh, there was a gentleman who was here earlier, he would, he he should make everybody's mind up, he did a great job of telling us that. I think if if we take a vote on this right now, uh, this this would, we would keep adult education to our contracts up. That's all I'm saying right now. I'm not, if anyone else on the board has the same feeling, you know, we could, a hundred thousand dollars savings, we there are ways where we can make that a hundred thousand dollars up. And I'm just saying that adult education is needed in this area, and I want our people to do it personally. I don't know what everybody else says.
I can ask a couple of questions from the board. 'Cause another topic was brought up about finding an alternative site, so that we have flexibility to do other things with other properties. I have no opposition to that, I think that's that's a good solution. Let me investigate that, let me get some more information. Between you and I, we will we will dig through that. There are some other other projects that we're working on, we will present that, we will present what we what we need to discuss with the finance committee. And Brian, can you refresh my memory, the finance committee date is when?
Um, March, yeah.
March the tenth, so we'll have it prior to the next board meeting, have further discussion. I too am, uh, very moved and pleased with the with the outcome, Brian, the adult education program. The, uh, the reality is, we've gotta make some tough decisions. And I don't know how else to say that to anybody, we're gonna be forced to make hard decisions. And but there were some options that were brought up by Dave earlier and s- and some other board members that I think think we need to investigate, 'cause we have to find, if we can find another solution that fits everyone's everyone's desire to hang on to that program, we need to try to find a way to that. Okay, Tina, you just have to talk, we'll talk, okay? That's all I'm saying. You know where I live.
Okay, so motion is taken now.
Yeah, I'd say thanks girls for speaking up, and you have a nice program, and thanks for giving people that second chance.
Thanks. Okay, Altona junior high school band uniforms, do we have a motion?
Can I have?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question, just for clarification. So, this is specifically just the band uniforms, not the choral polo shirts and.
It's all that, it's everything.
It this is everything, so it says band uniform, but this is the entire.
This is the entire.
It is, it is, that's just the band uniforms, the polo shirts, the gowns were purchased out of budget.
So, they're already purchased, so it's just a band uniform?
So, the other ones aren't, the other ones aren't coming later down the road?
They're already taken care of.
Yeah, they were purchased out of budget, yes.
This would be, the band uniforms had to be better.
The, uh, the band makes seventy seventy thousand dollars off that concession a year, they pay seven thousand for an away game. All the, I mean, we have the library to cut out of their budget, we have to still cut out the athletic budget. I think the band has to do their part, and maybe, maybe only pay twenty-five percent. I mean, they're making a lot of money off that concession, they're the only ones that run that concession, as mentioned. I think maybe a seventy-five, twenty-five split, just to do their part in helping us balance the budget.
Okay.
Dr. Freechow, can I make a comment on that?
But that's a discussion to take with the finance committee and move forward.
Dr. Freechow, may I comment on that?
Yes.
Um, the music, the currently as things.
Can you come to the microphone, please? Sorry, woman.
It's okay. A high school music parents are the ones that run the concession stands at this point in time, not the junior high school parents. So, therefore, they're not making money off of those concessions. The money that there that is fundraised through our music parents, um, and they are obviously, as mentioned, they would be paying, um, you know, half of the cost of this.
They don't have just one organization for the junior high?
They're they're separate at this point in time. They are looking, um, when we make the transition to combine the music parent organizations into one, and would also already, um, involve in the, um, the arts, the fine arts be involved in that as well. But that, at this point in time, they are two separate music parent organizations, one for the high school and one for the junior high.
And how do they, they have to fundraise by selling items or?
Parents have fundraisers, uh, they have, they hold their own fundraiser, and then there are fundraisers for, um, students. The junior high school has a, um, a fair share that they can also participate in, um, so they, um, that occurs in that fashion too.
Thank you. So, any more discussion?
I re- I respectfully recommend that the board approve the purchase of the junior high band uniforms. And if we wanna change, we can meet the finance, we can discuss changes to how we structure the, um, the concession stand proceeds moving forward, but at this point, we're dealing with a situation, we have to have the band uniforms come fall. And likewise, um, all the fundraising has occurred, occurred prior to this date.
I agree. I agree with you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Now, we're to personnel. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion?
I would like to thank Patty Burlingay for her many years of service and all the excellent projects, I mean, she's not for our choice. Thanks.
It's been a pleasure to work with Patty, and she has a couple grandchildren, and she's going to spend her time with them, it's been wonderful.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Committee reports, does anyone have anything that they would like to report on your committee? Otherwise, we do have the minutes, and you can go to the minutes to see what was discussed at the, the meeting.